The Waukam County Council to order. It is May 20th, 2014 at 7:00. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Red Brown?
Here.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Sam Crawford?
Here.
Pete Cremmon?
Here.
Ken Mann?
Here.
Carl Weimer?
Mr. Weimer is in Washington, DC, testifying to Congress today, so that's why he couldn't be here. Could all join me in the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Few announcements. If everyone would please turn off your cellphones. And if you're going to be handing out paperwork to us on the council, make sure you give a copy to our clerk down here. And I just want to report on one thing. We had an executive session before we came in here to discuss a property purchase for the flood control zone district, and we gave some guidance to staff about pursuing that option and doing some initial research. First, on our agenda is the minutes. Is there a motion for the minutes of the surface waters work session and the committee of the whole?
I'll move approval.
Ms. Brenner has moved approval of both items. Any corrections or discussion?
No, and I went through them all.
I know, you always go through them. Thank you, Ms. Brenner. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes.
Abstained, sorry.
Oh, Mr. Brown abstained.
I was absent.
Oh, okay. You didn't listen to the tapes?
No, but I did read the minutes.
Okay. So that passes five to zero to one abstention for Mr. Brown and one absent for Mr. Weimer. Okay, the math is going to be fun on this one. So we have a public hearing. Sign in, and no one has signed up, but I'll make some announcements on this anyway. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record, and we will be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of the time limit and let you know when you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your comments. If your last name is something other than Harris or Brown, please spell it for the clerk. Okay.
Even Brown, there's two kinds of Brown.
Yeah, let us know if there's an E on the end or not. So, our first public hearing is an ordinance establishing charges and fees for providing advanced life support ambulance transport services in Waukam County. Is there a staff report? All right, seeing no staff report, I would like to open the public hearing. If anybody wants to take their three minutes to weigh in on this subject, now is your chance. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any motion?
Move approval.
It's been moved to approve this ordinance. Mr. Crawford?
Being the council representative on the Medic One Board, I'd like to report that this has been the product of considerable amount of analysis and discussion, and one thing that happened along the way was we picked up another guy to help us work on it, and that was kind of cool. But in any case, there's a level of communication and cooperation between the city of Bellingham, Waukam County, and the fire districts that I think is kind of unprecedented. The outcome of that are things like this, where we've got, for the first time in a long time, a very unified approach to things like billing issues and things like that. So I'm very encouraged at a lot of things about how the Medic One situation has evolved over the last few years, and this is an outcome that I think we should be glad for. That said, it is an increase in fees. I'm just going to, I won't speak for the ambulance board, or the Medic One Board, but I'll say my personal thought is that with so much increase in medical costs while we get less and less compensation through the federal system from, quite frankly, what the health system has become accustomed to, that I am very much in favor of shifting those costs as much as we can to the users of the service. If we don't shift those costs, what happens is everybody, all the taxpayers, have to pick them up. And I think that an increase in ambulance service cost for the user is tough, in tough situations for them to bear sometimes. But I think we have to acknowledge that maintaining a system the way we used to, particularly the funding, is not going to provide a system that's sustainable financially into the future. And so this is necessary, and as we make future decisions, I will probably endorse the concept that any time that the user can share as much or more in the cost, I'm afraid they're going to have to.
Okay, thank you for that report, Mr. Crawford, and it is a good sign that we've got all of those agencies working together and coming up with an agreed-upon fee structure here. Is your hand up, Ms. Brenner?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I wanted to add just to that, though. I checked when we were working on this, and Medicare, for sure, I don't know about Medicaid, but Medicare, there's a certain amount they are allowed to charge to it, and they can't charge anymore. So for people on Medicare, whatever that charge is will go through into Medicare at the federal level.
Okay. Any further discussion? If the clerk would call the roll.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes. And Weimer is absent. All right, that passes six to zero with Weimer absent. We have our open session. During the open session, audience members will have up to three minutes to address the council on any issue relevant to county business other than the Gateway Pacific Terminal. And before beginning a comment, please state your name and your topic of interest. If your last name is something other than Brown or Harris, please spell it for the clerk and please speak into the microphone. Thank you for your cooperation, first up.
Greg Brown, I have another presentation. This is the Waukam County Public Works, and it's addressed to Frank Abart from, and I'm acting in, for the Lummi Island Ferry Advisory Committee. During this National Public Works Week, will you please relay to your entire workforce our appreciation for your cooperative spirit, attentive responses, and good works performed on matters relating to Lummi Island, particularly the Waukam County Chief? We also thank the county council, and specifically its committee for public works, health and safety, that's Barbara, Cannon, and Pete, for providing us the forum for involvement with the county's ferry operations process. We have been especially grateful for you dedicating Engineer James Lee as the ferry management liaison at our monthly meetings on Lummi Island. Others on your team, such as Chantel Helsing, as a direct contact internally, have helped enhance the communications between your department and our community. We understand how ferry operations encompass a wide range of activity and issues as vital public transportation for Lummi Island residents and other stockholders, such as property owners and visitors, on a tight budget with difficult time constraints. And we appreciate that public work understands how vital it is and interacts with us in a positive ways. Thank you for keeping us informed and involved in our commitment to enhancing open communications going forward. Let us know when and how we can be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Oh.
I'm sure that is much appreciated by Mr. Abart and Mr. Lee. Is there anybody else that is looking to speak to us during the open session?
That was from all.
Can I speak to you for a second?
Yeah, sure, come on down.
Well, I don't know if we're going to have time, it's such a, going to be a real busy night.
Frank Abart, Public Works Director. So of course it is National Public Works Week, and I wanted to accept this and thank Life Act for this. I'm going to try to get it kind of framed up a little bit and then post it out here in the rotunda with all the other displays. And I would also like to note that we have received quite a few emails and thank yous and things like that, and probably 80% of them are from Lummi Island, so wanted to recognize that, so.
Go ahead, Ms. Brenner.
James Lee's done an incredible job. Is there any chance that he can still work with the Lummi Island Life Act group? Because he's one, you're wonderful, you are. He's very, he's informative, he does, you know, it's just great information without any overtones.
He's good.
He's really good, yes.
Well done, thank you, Mr. Lee, and Mr. Abart, and Mr. Brown, and everybody else who's here, because I feel like we maybe should all introduce each other, since there's only about 20 of us.
You're assuming we don't, they don't all know each other.
Yeah, that's true, most of us know each other. All right, moving right along to our consent agenda from the Finance and Administrative Services Committee.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee met today, considered items one through seven on the consent agenda, recommended approval of those items, three to zero, and I would so move.
It's been moved to approve the consent agenda, items one through seven. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Other items from the Finance Administrative Services Committee, take it away, Mr. Crawford.
You bet. We had ordinance amending the county budget tenth request in the amount of $1,911,591. This was to adjust for our recent collective bargaining settlements with employees, as well as a number of other items were in there, courthouse improvements. The one that got the most discussion today in the committee was the placement of the new dolphins, which are the big wooden pilings that guide the ferry into its landing at Gooseberry Point, and some discussion about that. But in any case, the ordinance was recommended for approval, three to zero, and I would so move.
Okay, it has been moved for approval by the Chair of the Finance Committee. Any further questions or discussion? The clerk would please call the roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Weimer absent.
Next item is, was held in committee, it was the ordinance amending the purchasing system to modify the requirements for bid specifications, deposits, and awards. We'll take that up in a couple of weeks. The executive requested that he have an opportunity to look at the data being provided by Council Member Brenner and work on a response, and I think the executive and Council Member Brenner will probably be dialoguing about that in the next couple of weeks, and then the administration will come forward with their thoughts and comments on it, and the council can deliberate at that time.
And will that stay in committee?
Yeah, that's, that's held in committee.
Okay.
I guess we can, yeah, we can do that. All right, the next item was a resolution amending, this is going to be a flood control zone district board of supervisors vote, amending the 2014 flood control zone district budget fourth request in the amount of $4,725, and that was recommended for approval, three to zero, and I would so move.
It has been moved for approval to the flood control zone district board of supervisors, that's us. Any further questions or discussion?
And just for clarification, this also was the result of our union negotiation using some of the flood control money where it's eligible in the public works department.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair of the committee, and if the clerk would please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes six to zero.
And the last item was the contract between the county and 2020 Engineering for the Birch Point Stormwater Management Study in the amount of $60,000, recommended for approval, three to zero, and I would so move.
It's been moved to the county flood control zone district board of supervisors. Is there, oh, okay, we can do this as a roll call, or we do that as a resolution, as just a vote? Just a vote, okay. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Abstained.
And one abstention, it is five to zero with one abstention, and Mr. Weimer absent. Okay, moving right along to our other items. We, for those of you that are following our packing house ordinance, we have removed that from the agenda for tonight pending further discussions with our, our legal team and some other tweaks to it, and we're going to bring that back. We don't, I think we're going to put that in committee, actually, I'm going to take that in my planning committee, for those of you that are interested. Of course, that'll be available for public knowledge out on the website when we've figured out the schedule, hopefully soon. What I see next on my list is the request for confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Christina Kobdich to the Bellingham-Waukam County Commission Against Domestic Violence.
Move confirmation.
It's been moved to confirm Ms. Kobdich. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes six to zero. Next up is a confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Sue Sullivan to the Waukam County Public Health Advisory Board.
Move approval.
Mr. Cremmon has moved approval. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes six to zero. And confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Amber Poule to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
Sue.
Mr. Brown has moved confirmation. Any questions or discussions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes six to zero. And number nine is a resolution of the Bellingham City Council and the Waukam County Council recognizing Waukam Medic One, and I just want to read the resolution, because I think it's, it's important. This is recognizing 40 years of providing advanced life support services in county. So, because the county executive isn't here, I get to read this. This is a joint resolution of Bellingham City Council and Waukam County Council recognizing Waukam Medic One for 40 years of providing advanced life support service throughout the city of Bellingham and Waukam County. Whereas Waukam Medic One was formed by the Bellingham Fire Department in July 1974 and began delivering countywide advanced life support paramedic services in the city of Bellingham and throughout Waukam County, and whereas the week of May 18th through May 24th has been designated National EMS Week by the American College of Emergency Physicians, its founder and sponsor, with this year's theme being EMS Dedicated for Life. And whereas National EMS Week celebrates and honors the hundreds of thousands of EMS practitioners serving our communities across the nation, and recognizes the many changes taking place in our nation's healthcare system, as well as the new opportunities and challenges that are emerging within this noble profession. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Waukam County Council that the county, that the county council hereby recognizes the 40th year anniversary of Waukam Medic One and honors the men and women associated with the advanced life support system for their public service and dedication to the citizens of the city of Bellingham and throughout Waukam County. Approve this, well, assuming it'll be approved this 20th day of May, 2014.
Move approval.
It has been moved for approval. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Cremmon?
Well, I just want to point out, being the old, oldest guy on the, on the council, I just want to give my colleagues a little, a little history on this. I'm very proud of our EMS system. It's one of the best, if not the best, in the entire, entire state, and Seattle, King County, Medic One kind of blazed the trail, and again, is another stellar example of EMS service. But I think even here in Waukam County, we've eclipsed the, the performance of King County. I'm a little biased, of course. But the history lesson is that back in, when it was started in 1974, when Crown Ambulance went belly up, the private provider for ambulance service in our community, the city of Bellingham and Waukam County stepped up and provided emergency services, ambulance service, to not only the city of Bellingham, but Waukam County, they had three commissioners back then, the county did, and the three commissioners and the city of Bellingham agreed that they were going to share equally the costs for providing EMS service for the entire county, and I want to let you know what that figure was. It was a grand total of $60,000, $30,000 from the city of Bellingham, and $30,000 from Waukam County. And today, I think that figure is somewhere around $8 million. That, we're getting our money's worth, I just wish we got a better reimbursement rate from the federal government, but, and we're working on that, but I just want to show you how much our, our service has not only increased in, in the cost, but the, the quality and the professionalism of the service has increased just as much, if not more. So I'm very proud of our EMS system, the entire community's very fortunate to have it, and I think this resolution is, is more than an order, and I'm very proud to, to be supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. Cremmon. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes six to zero. Onto our introduction items, is there a motion to accept?
Sue.
Mr. Brown has moved to accept the introduction items. I just want to make sure everyone knows there are three items in our original packet and two items in salmon-colored packets relating to the fourth, Fourth Judge courtroom project. So we have, actually, I might have made a mistake there, my numbers show one, two, three, five, and six. Is there a number four that was supposed to be? No, so it's a total of five introduction items? Okay. So the three original ones, and then the two that I mentioned in the salmon packet, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes six to zero. We've accepted the introduction items. Committee reports, other items, and council member updates. We'll start on my right with Mr. Brown and move this way.
So for clarification, I think this is the first time we're putting all of that into one shot, right? Is that?
Second time.
Second.
Last, last. Oh, did we do it last time, too? Okay, so it's sort of a, when it's your turn, speak about everything you want to talk about.
It's a potpourri.
Okay.
Mr. Brown?
So the airport advisory group, of which I am the council's member, has gone, is going through a stage of reorganizing itself and themselves into two groups, the BAC, which is basically the citizens, and the TAC, which is basically the technical. They have had some meeting cancellations, and it prompted me to talk to the Port of Bellingham Commissioners and just check in with them as to whether this is the best way for the county council to be interacting, given that the BAC is basically going to be involved with noise complaints. And I have suggested to them in discussion that maybe the council and the Port of Bellingham should be interacting with each other on economic development issues and transportation issues, and maybe that needs to be a different meeting. So I'm waiting to hear back from them and what their thoughts are. So in the meantime, our participation is in limbo.
Okay, thanks. Well, yeah, if you can, if you can figure out a way for us to meet regularly with them on economic development and transportation, that would be helpful. That's a good idea. Mr. Buchanan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This afternoon, we discussed, actually, this morning, flood control zone district advisory committee recommendation of the Cyrie property, and we voted in committee two to zero to give direction to staff to move this forward. Now Paula, I have a question for you before I make a motion. I guess you didn't have to come all the way down here, if, you could have nodded. Was that all you needed, was direction?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that would be the motion that the committee approved recommending to the council, two to zero, that we would move forward on the project, and I would so move.
So you are moving that we, your motion is that we provide direction to the staff to move ahead with finding solutions to that, that Cyrie property out on the Nookseak River? Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Crawford?
Yeah, I had made that motion in committee, and after I made the motion, I explained that while moving this forward, I would like the awareness for the council to be kept informed as, as this goes forward, as to whether or not it's really going to be practical to do the work on that this year. And I, for one, speaking for myself, am open-minded to the idea that we may have to sacrifice another winter's flood season, but I certainly don't want to get our equipment and, or our contractors' equipment out there and all the mobilization that goes with it, and then have an early flood season. So if in their judgment, the folks that work on these things in public works feel that the way it's coming down is it's going to be best to delay this till 2015, I'm open to that and amenable to that, and I consider that a real possibility. But with all of that, I am supportive of utilizing funds on this one to move forward. I guess as long as I've got the floor here, I'll say another thing I said earlier, and that is, I originally was not in favor of doing this item because it was so down on our, so far down on the priority list of all the water projects we have, and far down on the list, even if you isolate just the flood projects. But there's a couple of compelling things, but the main one is that the Flood Control Advisory Board, not, not unanimously by any stretch, but did deliberate on this for quite a few months, and the majority of them, I think it was a seven to five vote, at least that's what was reported to me, did agree that this should move forward, and I respect the judgment of those folks, particularly the agricultural interests that are on there, and I think they're very, you know, these are citizens that have stepped up and become very cognizant of our limited resources in terms of what we have to spend money on, and they're very aware of that, and I respect their opinion on that. So like I said, I was kind of on the fence or leaning against this, but with the latest approval of the committee, I'm going to support it.
All right, Mr. Brown?
I have, I have a couple of challenges with this, not the least of which is, I'm not actually sure it's supported within the ordinance in terms of the priorities that are listed for the use of funds. The second part is, the normal process for the repair and maintenance of projects requires that if it's a citizen request, the citizen contributes in a minimum of 30% to the cost of the project, and I don't see any discussion that's going on about the landowner, in this case contributing money to the project. So I think there's a lot of unanswered questions as to whether this is actually even within the purview of what the flood monies are supposed to be used for.
Could I respond to that real quick?
Mr. Crawford?
Well, just on that topic, could we possibly hear from Paula about that, because that did not come up, and I was not aware that we were supposed to require a 30% commitment from the property owner, if that's what I understood you to say.
Paula Cooper Public Works, typically in the situation, that project site is within Sumas-Nookseak-Eversen subzone, so typically the subzone would put up the 30%. Right now, that subzone only has two members, and they haven't been engaged in this discussion very much, just because one of them got us an easier place recently, and the other one just has been dealing with Swift Creek, so. But they would be approached, I think, for the first, for the 30% match.
So if we affirmed this tonight, you would go ahead and contact them and?
Yeah, I've let them know that we were discussing this, and it was a project within their subzone, but they just haven't made it to any of the discussions.
And there, are they, has the question come up about the money yet? Have you brought that up, or they just haven't had a meeting to even?
Well, I think that, you know, there wasn't a move to go forward with it, so, you know.
So their lack of meeting might be indicative that they're not wanting to commit money?
Or that they just are not tracking it very well.
Okay.
Which is my like.
Okay, Ms. Brenner, you had your hand up.
Did I? Okay.
Well, you don't have to say anything if you don't want to.
Well, I should probably wait till after you say something.
Well, you and I might go back and forth. Okay, do you want to go, or you want me to go?
You do it first.
Okay. So, I strongly oppose this expenditure, not because I don't think it's a beautiful site with valuable farmland and something that we're all trying to protect and preserve, but when we sit up here- but when we sit up here, we, our job is to make hard choices, and I hope Mr. Kremen is listening because I'm trying to persuade him as much as anyone.
I'm multitasking, Mr. Chair.
When we're sitting up here, we have to make choices and to commit $750,000 plus or minus, maybe it'll be a million or two by the time we're done, to preserve a small piece of private property is not a wise investment and it sets a precedent that anybody can come to us and say, hey, my riverfront property is eroding, will you bail me out next? And I've been pretty consistent on opposing a lot of these type of projects, but this one especially, it would be cheaper to buy the property than to try and armor it or protect it in a way that could be washed downstream one year later. And I know it's hard and when you're on those advisory committees and your heartstrings get full because you want to, you sympathize with the farmers, you sympathize with the property owners, but we're the guardians of the public tax dollars and I don't see a compelling public interest in this case. And there's a state highway there, but we all know the state will be responsible for that when the time comes. And I do not believe there are any legitimate scientific fish issues regarding this erosion that's somehow contributing sediment to the river at this location. We haven't heard from anyone. And there's plenty of environmentalists in this county trying to protect fish, and none of them have stepped forward on this issue to say that that's a compelling problem. We have a sophisticated landowner who owns that property, who knew what he was getting into when he bought it, and they're, just for all of those reasons, I oppose this. But the overriding one is just the principle of using public dollars to bail out a private landowner's property. It is, it is not our job to do that. We are not going to disaster-proof the county in advance and we are not going to bail everyone out after the fact in perpetuity. We can't afford it and it's not right and that's not the government's job. So I'm going to oppose this and I strongly encourage my fellow council members to oppose it as well. Ms. Brenner.
Well, I strongly support this and I don't think it's about bailing anybody out. It's about protections on the river that have, for me, more to do with salmon habitat. And, you know, you can get environmentalists up here to say whatever they want or don't want. This is little to them because there's a bigger issue to them. Maybe, I don't want to, you know, I'm an environmentalist, so there, and I care about this. And I feel like I went out there, I looked for myself, there was a reason I went out there, and I trust my judgment, and it was filthy brown in the river and it had come, you know, we'd lost so much in the last year or two. I just don't see how salmon are going to be able to spawn in that part of the river with that kind of sediment there. So nobody, you don't have to agree with me, but that's my opinion. And I, you know, and I don't think just because a scientist hasn't come forward, I don't think, no offense to Public Works, I just don't think Public Works wanted to do this from the beginning and I, because I've just heard negative, negative all the time. I think it's, we caused that whole thing to begin with, when we stopped dredging the river in this huge island form right next to that piece of property and is funneling the water right into it. So I just don't agree. I think it is an important issue to protect salmon.
Mr. Brown and then Mr. Kremen.
So I think the relevant section that we should be focusing on as we think through this is under section 100 dot 05 dot 1010 and then down through to 060. So there's a list of criteria for choosing the projects. Number one is threat to public safety. Number two is damage to public infrastructure. Number three is impact on the regional economy. Number four is damage to private structures. This doesn't respond to any of those particular issues. And then further up, we look at the issue if we were to do, it says for flood control, repair, and maintenance projects, property owners or local sponsors shall pay at least 30% of the total cost of the project, including design and permitting. There are, to me, there are a lot of unanswered questions, and my biggest single issue with this is we have an established process which is in the county code and we seem to be jumping around that. If this is not giving us the decisions we want, we should be changing the code, not just doing a decision outside of the code.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, I don't have the luxury of looking through this right now, but I would, I would be willing to bet there's another section of that code that does cover it. We deal with all kinds of flood issues and we use flood control money when we deal with them. I don't think this is outside the realm of what we use flood control money for. So it, you know, it's really difficult when you just pull out a one piece. There's, we have, we have regulations and codes and everything that actually even contradict each other. So I wouldn't put any stock in saying that one little piece says we can't use it for this particular project.
I'll just add one thing to that where as far as the process for ranking these projects, he is right that it has gone outside of that process. We have a very, very established, an excellent process for doing this and this is why, because whenever we get familiar with the details of a project, of course you want to help people, of course you want to save people's property. But there's a ranking and this is, was 150th on the list and it has moved up sort of on its own and gotten a special treatment and it's, it's not following the established process. That's just one reason. As I, all the other reasons I already stated are good ones to vote against it as well. Mr. Brown.
And then what we haven't addressed is if we take resources to do this, even if it's just the management resources to manage an independent contractor, those resources have to be taken away from other projects because the department has a finite amount of labor. The two issues that, well, we've got a couple of really major issues in this area. Swift Creek is one, but the two that concern me most is Demming and Jones Creek, both of which could have impact on schools and kids, and that's a much higher priority to me than vacant land.
Mr. Crawford.
Just a couple of responses. In saying that if Public Works feels it would be better to delay this till summer of 2015, I am kind of in a roundabout way trying to address that. And as I shared with Councilmember Brown in the back office earlier today, I do not want to see any priority or expediting of the Jones Creek and some of these other projects. Some of those are, might be characterized by some as time bombs waiting to happen and we're very knowledgeable, we've done a lot of work on some of these other areas, we've got to keep moving forward on them. So I think part of Public Works' consideration on how to handle this might take into account that internal resources would also be a reason for delay. And again, I'm open to that, but I have switched my opinion on, you know, the use of the money. To elaborate on that a little bit and to address some of the things you've said, I respect the prioritization also, but if it were as simple as we could set a bunch of priorities on a list, we could then just hand that list off to staff and quit talking about it. But there's, there's more to this than that. It's a very dynamic and changing situation with that river and it's also a dynamic and changing situation with where to best put resources depending on how needs come and go. This is not the first time we've diverted, you know, I think of Dozer Hole and some other things like that. You know, it's, it's, to me, it's simply a matter that we, as the council and particularly our volunteer flood control zone advisory board members who are trying to be responsive to a very changing situation and simultaneously, I hope, do respect that priority of the bigger projects that have the most impact. But I am not opposed, simply because we have a priority list, in every circumstance to use that as a reason not to raise a particular project up to where it needs to be addressed.
So I've seen Mr. Kremen and Mr. Buchanan briefly with hands up. Did you want to say anything, Mr. Kremen? I thought you were.
Well, you know, well, I might as well weigh in. This is going to be a close vote and it's not an easy vote because there are, there's merit to arguments on both sides. But I think in the final analysis, I think that we do need to give credence to the prioritization of the advisory committee. I think, you know, if we were to just ignore in spite of the fact that it wasn't in, you know, a supermajority vote, I mean, it's hard enough now to get volunteers to serve on these kinds of decision-making organizations, there were groups, committees, and if we were to just, you know, ask them for their opinion and then they give us their opinion and then we do what we feel like we're doing, not taking into consideration the deliberations and the time and the effort and discussion and debate that they put into this, I think it's going to be even harder to get members to serve on these kinds of advisory committees. That's, that's one issue. I think the issue that was brought up by Councilmember Brenner is a valid one about, I do think, now, people can argue about varying degrees, but I do think that the sediment and debris that is falling into the river is detrimental to the habitat. Again, we can debate to what extent, but it is not good for the habitat. And it also creates potential flooding situations further down river. And we've seen that time and time again when, when the silt and the, you know, the soil and the gravel and debris accumulate near the mouth of the river and then we wind up having flooding problems down river. So Mr. Brown's points about, that you brought up, I'm not going to reiterate it then, but, you know, they have some merit and validity too. But I, and I'm going to say, you know, you say it's our fault that we didn't do, I have to fondly disagree with Councilmember Brenner. What really frustrates me more than anything is that the Department of Fish and Wildlife, I believe eight years ago or so, had the opportunity to give a permit for us to address this problem that many anticipated when it was a very small problem, but those people with a lot of experience saw the potential for the enormity or the magnitude of the erosion problem that we now are seeing was a missed opportunity. I think the cost, had we, had we actually addressed the problem at the time, would have been about, I think it was between $6,000 and $8,000 rather than the three-quarters of a million dollars that we're talking about now. That's what frustrates me more than anything else because I think that was short-sighted and ill-advised and just a bad decision. And unfortunately, we're, we're going to have to live with that and, you know, pay, pay a heck of a lot more now because of short-sightedness. So I'm going to be supporting this, this measure and I think I can count and hopefully my math is accurate and I'm going to be voting on the prevailing side.
Mr. Buchanan.
Yes, I was wondering if we could get any kind of an opinion from legal about the recitals that Mr. Brown referred to? The code recitals that Mr. Brown read?
Sorry, I didn't, if you could repeat it.
So the section, let me just find it again.
It was, it was whether or not the flood control money was actually even available for this, based on what he read to us. I was just wondering your opinion.
I, I'm really not prepared to give an off-the-cuff opinion on that. If that's something that you're concerned about, I'd rather take some time with it.
And for reference, I'm referring to 100 dot 05 dot 040.
I can use?
That's in the, in the code?
In the code, yeah.
Do I?
I'll let Ms. Frakes have a moment with the code while Ms. Brenner answers the question with her opinion.
With my opinion, yes. We could very easily say that there is potential for it to wash out that state highway and you can say all you want that that's the responsibility of the state, but the state doesn't always come through when they're supposed to. Those are still our county residents who live out there. And that road is extremely important, you know, that part of the road to the whole East County, so that's, that would fit right in that, one of the prerequisite things. It's infrastructure.
Yeah, it's, it is infrastructure and if we start preemptively helping the state pay for stuff, that's going to get expensive really quickly.
You mean like Swift Creek?
Yeah.
They're not paying, that's, that's not their infrastructure at risk.
It's mostly, they own most of it, the mountain there, they own most of that.
Most of the debris is coming from their land.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's not their infrastructure at risk. They're more than happy to get rid of that land. Mr. Brown.
So I am the council's representative on this committee and so I've attended all the meetings of this committee on this topic. The, one of the things that was obvious, the last committee where this decision was made, is it was, many of the members have different interpretations as to what their mandate is. And one of the things I asked for was that we provide everybody with a clear set of guidelines as to what the mandate is of how this money should be spent. The second thing is, given that there is a lot of confusion on the committee, it's important to note that the vote for this was five to seven. So five of the members of the community, of that committee, some have been on it for many years, voted against this, they don't believe it's a good use of the funds.
And seven voted for it.
Ms. Frakes, did you come up?
I'm a little confused as to the specific question, so maybe you could frame that again for me. I found the portion of the code.
Yeah, Mr. Brown read some recitals and then questioned whether that this expenditure would even be authorized based on those recitals in the code.
According to the code, property owners or local sponsors shall pay at least 30% of the total cost of the project, but there's a provision unless the Board of Supervisors approves a different formula.
And then the last paragraph says, financial participation of the district in flood hazard reduction projects shall be determined by the Board of Supervisors, that's us, on a case-by-case basis.
So I'll just reiterate one thing. I don't care if it's 1%, this is in principle not an appropriate use of public funds. And we haven't heard a shred of technical evidence or testimony about whether or not the erosion at this site is good or bad for salmon. We haven't heard a shred of evidence or testimony about, other than Ms. Brenner's testimony.
And, Mr. Brown?
I don't know of any testimony we've heard talking about downstream effects from fixing or not fixing this. I mean, when, once we start messing with that river, all kind of unintended consequences happen.
That's why.
So I don't, but just looking at this one right here, this is not a choice I think we can make and I'm quite surprised that Mr. Kremen has indicated he will support it, but of course, that's his, that's his right. So does Mr. Crawford, are you raising your hand too?
Oh, I'm just sitting here going, wow, with that, I think this dialogue has gotten to the point we just need to.
Yeah, well, I'm going to let Mr. Buchanan finish his comment and I thought I saw your hand up again.
I just wanted to get an interpretation of Mr. Brown's.
Anyone else? Okay. So is this, this is a resolution, yeah. So we can do a voice vote on this one?
This is just direction to staff.
Yeah, this is direction to staff. Yeah, this is direction to staff. All those in favor? Oh, Mr. Brown.
So I think you'd actually asked Ms. Frakes two questions, which was the statements that I made, because the second one was on 100 05 040, which was guidelines. And I think the question you were trying to ask her is, does this meet any of those four guidelines of the threats to public safety, damage to public infrastructure, impacts to regional economy, or damage to private structures?
Answered that question.
And I think, and my point is, I think that's a question that does need to be answered first.
Ms. Brenner.
We discussed that in the surface water meeting specifically, about what percentage of potential it is to knock out the road there. That was all three of those priorities. The only thing, and actually, well, the economy too, for everybody east of there. So, it's, you know, I guess we just look at it differently. But to me, those, three of those, for the very first three, are completely covered with protecting, you know, the road, and there was a lot of erosion in the last year or so, and we figured if it did that for a few more years, that road would be gone.
Mr. Crennan.
At the risk of belaboring the issue, not to minimize its importance, but I do need to state that this council and prior councils have put a very high priority in protecting ag land. And, you know, the chair's suggestion that we could just buy it and let it erode is certainly a valid, you know, a valid issue, but, you know, this council and prior councils have spent literally millions of dollars protecting ag land because we put such a high priority on it. And I think that's another compelling reason why this difficult issue, and not a black-and-white issue, I think should be supported. It's because our county, people that live within our county, and the economy of our county is very supportive and dependent on the ag industry, and I think that's just, as I say, another compelling reason why we should be supporting this resolution.
I'm just going to respond briefly, but if you're interested in protecting ag land, there is many ways we could get a return on investment of $750,000 that would be better than a temporary fix on the Nook Sac River. And I'll leave it at that. Well, I didn't, Ms. Brenner, you go ahead, and then Mr. Brown.
Well, I'm not sure I agree with that, but even so, for me, it's both ag and salmon habitat, and you don't have to agree with me on either, but to me, they're both represented in this project.
Mr. Brown.
So my understanding is the original recommendation that would provide a reasonable amount of certainty that the job could actually get done was costed out at $2.2 million. So this proposal, three-quarters of a million dollars, is an attempt to get the price tag down, but offers no guarantee it will actually work.
Mr. Chair, I would like to call for the question.
All right, I'm going to honor that request. All those in favor of recommending staff to pursue this option?
Well, I think you actually have to take a vote on whether they support calling the question, but is that right?
He called for the question.
I called for the question. Don't we have to take an actual vote on calling for the question? Yes.
Oh, okay. So.
So I'm making a move to conclude the debate and discussion on this issue and vote.
All right. Mr. Crennan has moved to end discussion and debate on this issue. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Everyone wants to attend. That passes. Six to zero.
Popular motion of the whole nation.
Okay, so moving right along to Mr. Buchanan's original motion, which we have been debating. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. That passes four to two, with Mann and Brown opposed. Any other business from council members? It's my turn, actually, I will defer, I have nothing exciting to report. Ms. Brenner.
In the Public Works Committee, first, we had a wonderful presentation from PSE about how they provide energy and how we are, Wauken County is a huge source of their energy production, which I think is pretty neat. We're it. Then, we also had a discussion and a move for recommendation to the council. We had a discussion about a proposal to put in a crosswalk in the area of Parkstone Drive, I think it's Drive, Parkstone Lane, on Lake Way Drive. And the motion that came out that we approved, I think it was, yeah, three to zero, for the full council, committee approved a motion to request that the administration and Public Works Department develop and provide the council with the top three crosswalk plans, including price estimates, with at least one model using the Kirkland Ped Flag in the vicinity of Parkstone, as mentioned by the proponents.
That's your motion? And then it had a recommendation in committee?
Yes, it was moved and unanimously approved.
Recommended three to zero. Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Crawford.
On the face of it, I'm generally supportive. I'm wondering, would this kind of thing be part of the six-year plan, and should we not? Or is this just housekeeping, you know, a little, what do they call it, budget dust item that, yeah, budget dust, that we can just kind of throw in without really, I just was wondering what, from the perspective of Public Works, where you would be on the, you know, because the request, and I think it sounds like a good idea, would be to basically provide us with some options there and talk about it. I did get to read the letter that Joe wrote to the property owners, but where are we at on actually doing something here? Is this within a work program that we can handle?
Frank Abart, Public Works, it's my understanding, exactly as she described, that we're supposed to come back with some options for further discussion. So at this point, there really isn't a project yet to be putting in the plan.
Okay.
But if it becomes a project, that's when we would want to be incorporating it into probably the six-year plan.
Well, depending, the other part of the motion was, do not just come back with proposals, but proposals plus the costs of those proposals, and depending on those costs, I think that would determine whether or not I would go on the six-year road plan or not.
And as Public Works Director, you're amenable to looking into that if we provide that request?
Sure. In fact, I briefed with Mike Don, who's already got some ideas, and he's getting ready to, you know, pursue it, so.
And we're very grateful for that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So, all those in favor of supporting this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes six to zero. Ms. Brenner, you may continue.
Yes, let me see what else I got here. Oh, yeah, I got to tell you, I went to this awards event that was put on by Northwest Washington Sustainability Challenge, and it was groups of students from Western who invented things. One of them was a really neat fountain that, and I, I'm not going to remember all of them, I remember the fountain because I had, they had a pamphlet with it too. Plus, it takes water out of the rain and even humidity and sets up public, you know, fountain places where people can get water and drink and all, without pulling it in from, you know, the nook sac or anything like that. Another one was a solar window that was pretty awesome. I mean, I was very impressed by it. Another one was a kite that goes up, you know, in the air, and it's got a generator on the ground, and it powers this generator. These were, like, there were five different inventions. I thought they were all pretty amazing, and I did invite every one of them to come make a presentation to our Public Works Committee. I think it would be so neat. So, I was really impressed. These are, you know, they're tomorrow, these are the people of tomorrow. I just think it's amazing. So, I wanted to share that.
Thank you, Ms. Brenner. Mr. Crennan.
I'm going to be silent.
Mr. Crawford.
And I'm going to bring up just a little housekeeping item that occurred to me while I was sitting here. I have not informed the clerk nor the chair that, although I did mention it to the vice chair tonight, that I am going to be gone for the August 5th meeting. And at that point, the vice chair mentioned he might be gone that week too, and I'm sure the clerk would appreciate knowing at least that we're going to have a quorum on August 5th. So I didn't know if anyone else had vacation scheduled during that time. You know, as council members, we're not supposed to schedule vacation, I mean, the whole point of having the break after that is to do it, but unfortunately, I was in a circumstance this year where I needed to be gone on August 5th, so is it just you and me, or I just wanted to run that by the rest of the council?
As far as I know, unless Mr. Weimer gets summoned to Washington DC again.
But we would still have a quorum of four.
Well.
Mr. Crennan.
I actually do have plans, but I'm going to cancel them so we can have a quorum.
Good for you. You are such a hard-working, dedicated.
Thank you, Mr. Crennan, I do appreciate that.
Okay, so that's the only thing I wanted to bring up, was that I will be gone that week, but that's a long ways off, or six weeks off or something.
All right, well, seeing no opposition and hearing no opposition, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.